Good morning and welcome to the Lyon County Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Planning Commission meetings are open to the public and members of the public may attend in person and the meetings are also virtual and the public may attend via virtual Zoom. Public comment. Lyon County allows the following alternatives for public comment. If you're attending the virtual Zoom meeting, public comment may be provided by raising your hand and requesting to provide public comment. This can occur in several ways, including by dialing star nine from your phone to raise your hand and request to speak for public comment. To unmute yourself, dial star six. You can also provide public comment for this meeting by sending us an email at kpage@lyon-county.org the day prior to the posted meeting date. Be sure to type "public comment" in the subject line. Written public comments may also be mailed to the Lyon County Community Development Office at twenty-seven South Main Street, Yarrington, Nevada, eight-nine-four-four-seven, but all public comments must be received prior to the date of the meeting if the comments are to be included in the supplemental materials. Any written public comment received the day of the meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the Planning Commission within twenty-four hours after the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person at the Greg Honeywell Lyon County Commission Chambers, twenty-seven South Main Street, Yarrington, Nevada. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The Board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based on viewpoint. Item one is roll call and we are all present in chambers. Item two, Pledge of Allegiance. Connie, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, the Constitution says, "One nation, united in small, with equal justice for all."
Item three, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the Planning Commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record and to sign and print their name on the form at the lectern. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic. The Commission reserves the right to reduce this three-minute time limit as well as limit the total time for public comment. If your item requires extended discussion, please request the Chair to calendar the matter for a future Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission will not restrict comments based on viewpoint. The same applies to public testimony on each agenda item. The Chair may reopen public participation at any time during the meeting. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Is there any public comment not related to any items on this agenda? Okay, seeing none. Item four, review and adoption of agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at it?
How much we adopt today's agenda?
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, for possible action, approval of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look at those?
Then why did you do that?
Anyone else have comments?
Normally I just give typos to staff, but there were a few things. And yes, number five on page one was one of those that I picked up on. And then the second to the last paragraph on that page, I just was wondering, is it grants a word? They make up so many words these days and it could be, but I thought the word should be agreement. Let's change it to agreement. And then first paragraph on page three. Last sentence on the first paragraph, there's an extra E in there. Then on page. On page five. I was kind of confused about my, my comments above. And then almost in the middle, one, two, three, four, five, seventh paragraph, I guess. I thought I was concerned about there only being construction jobs and that the twelve jobs that were going to be on site. My question was that were the staff that they were bringing in or were these going to be jobs available to local residents? But if you wouldn't mind checking that. Okay, thank you. And then on page seven. Right after the paragraph at toward the bottom, Commissioner Hendricks. The second line, almost toward the end, and A is missing and asked. And this is why I'm bringing all and mentioning the typos now, I'd have given them to you just separately, Shannon, but on page nine, on eight E. I don't know what the. What the motion was, who motioned, who seconded? It doesn't have the results or anything in that, in that item. That's all I had.
Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, I'll take a motion.
A motion that we approved to the minutes of the August ninth meeting with the corrections.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Item six, presentation and reading of miscellaneous correspondence. Did we have any of that? Okay. Item seven, advisory reports. Do we have any of those? Thank you. Okay, public hearing items. Item eight A for possible action to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for a conditional use permit requested by Silver Springs Stagecoach Hospital District for an expansion installation of commercial coaches for office space of a non-conforming use hospital in the C-one neighborhood commercial zoning district located at three-five-nine-five West Highway fifty, Silver Springs, Nevada, APN oh-one-eight dash three-five-four dash oh-eight, PLZ dash twenty-twenty-two dash one-three-eight. Louis?
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting. As stated in the introduction, the site is located in Silver Springs on Highway fifty, just east of the Ramsey Weeks cutoff of the La Hotten Medical Center. These images show the parcel size as well as the developed area of the parcel on the right. So the parcel itself is approximately six and a half acres, but notably that the portion of the parcel that's developed is along the highway and that boxed area is about two, two-point-eight acres. I think that's notable so that we recognize that the expansion of the proposed expansion for development would be occurring in the same footprints, generalized footprint along the highway. Here's an image that I, from Google Earth, I think, then clarifies what we're, we're speaking of as far as existing development. We're all probably pretty familiar with this area. The animal shelter, just a little bit west, would also be right along Highway fifty. One more image here displaying the existing development on site. So the larger medical buildings over seven thousand square feet and the existing office and clinic, it's approximately two thousand square feet. Now, per the existing zoning of C-one, which is a remnant of Title X, subject to Title Fifteen's neighborhood commercial zoning, the use of a hospital is not permitted use or even one that would be allowed with entitlement. However, the existence of the hospital predates our development code. So as a result, the hospital is a legally existing, non-conforming use and as such requires a conditional use permit for any expansion of use. In this case, again, as read into the record as part of the introduction, the applicant's proposing an expansion of the use by way of additional office space to be housed in a commercial coach of one thousand four hundred and forty square feet. The actual dimensions are twenty-four feet by sixty feet. This image is from the site plan submitted by the applicant and in your packets, the pink areas are the existing structures and then that green and gray box would be the location of the proposed coach. As you can see, it's still within the generalized footprint of existing development, so they're not really expanding that much right in the edge of the pavement. Connection would be made for public water and sewers. That would include Silver Spring, Silver Springs Mutual Water Company and the Silver Springs General Improvement District for Sewer. Chapter fifteen to thirty-oh-six of our development code includes the findings for a conditional use permit that should be contemplated by staff, the Planning Commission, and the Board in order for approval to be recommended. And I summarized here just the, the sort of more salient points of staff's findings. As you might have recognized, I didn't draft this report, but I think the, the topic is fairly clearly stated that finding A for the master plan, you know, the use of a hospital is consistent with employment designation for the master plan. The expansion is localized and existing developments along the highway, so impacts to traffic and to access would be negligible. And N dot, of course, does not need additional improvements. That's a beautiful brand new roadway section. The use is localized or finding E, I've already mentioned that a couple of times. If you do read through the findings, you will see a number of, the, the findings do sort of repeat themselves a little bit about adverse impacts or potential material damage to neighbors' properties. Staff is not of the opinion that that would be the case. All the development standards would be applicable and that would include then, you know, building permits and connection fees for sewer and water, et cetera, for any expansion. And no reviewing agencies who were. Who received the information, comment, offered any comment. So staff was not asked to, to add any conditions from, from any other entities. There is one error in the staff report. I was happy to work with the applicant's representative Vanessa Stewart and Director Ruketa from Utilities, and we recognize that, that our, our GIS system doesn't include this parcel within the Silver Springs General Improvement District for sewer service. However, as Vanessa pointed out, they connected twenty years ago, so they, they've been paying fees for twenty years. We like to think that that sewage is not running out into a ditch. So the correction here for the, the staff report, we'll have to note that a fixture unit count would be necessary before obtaining or calculating the appropriate connection fees. As a result, staff does have a recommendation to add a, a condition to the ones that are already in the staff report, and I'll read it into the record. It's recommended as number seven simply because we already have six. And simply states that the applicant shall work with the Silver Springs General Improvement District to determine a fixture count for the commercial coach and appropriate connection fees for sewer service. With that, I'm available for questions and again, the applicant representative, Miss Stewart is here as well.
I, I do have one question. Why not just clean up the zoning?
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Community Development Director, for the record. It has to do with the commercial coach. We're pretty limited in the. And they allowed zoning districts for those and because it wouldn't comply if we were to change the zoning district for a hospital and.
Okay. Thank you. Loretta, do you have any questions? Michael? John? Loretta? Sean? Connie? Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none? Seven. Seven. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Louis. Item eight B for possible action to approve the request made by BDR Construction for a tentative parcel map to subdivide an existing ten-acre parcel into two parcels. The smallest parcel would be approximately five-point-zero acres via the parcel map subdivision process located at two-one-six Lower Colony Road, Smith Valley, Nevada, APN zero-one-zero dash two-nine-one dash four-seven, PLZ dash twenty-twenty-two dash one-three-four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting. Subject site is located in Smith Valley. This image is from our, our GIS system showing the location of Wellington. Obviously, the site is north of Wellington. The master plan designation for the property is rural residential for the master plan, chapter three. The types of uses here include lower density residential development and proposed division would be consistent with the, the land used described in the master plan. The zoning is RR three, as you hear every time, that's a remnant from Title X. For the consistency matrix, this property is subject to rural residential five-acre minimum zoning RR five. The subject site is ten acres in size and their proposed. Split of the property would be two five-acre parcels, but at this point, we'll turn this over to the applicant's representative, Ms. Kate Cunningham.
Kate Cunningham, for the record. I'm representing EDR Construction and Rick Newsom, the owner of the company, is here today to answer questions as we move along. So this property at two-sixteen Lower Colony, as we've covered, it's currently ten acres. We want to create two five-acre parcels from that property. It is in the FEMA flood zone that's unshaded and we have a map of that coming up. You can see the division and it's a little hard to see, but on the left side of the lower parcel will be an easement, so there'll be one point of access. At right below the lowest parcel line, it will go north and serve the two properties to the north and will also serve the ones to the south. And so the access is not an issue and that is just one access point. And there's again, a picture of the property is slightly different background. You can see its current size, but it's future size in relation to some of the parcels on Sinc Sophia, et cetera. It's still a larger parcel than some of those and it is compliant as Louis pointed out. So these details, I guess they're not easy to see, but they just outline on the map itself the setbacks, et cetera, for this property. So it will comply with those as it's developed. There was a soils report completed for this property in three locations, so they have some options for where to. Put the septic in the well, there's a trip generation, it does not exceed or require a traffic report. And this is a photograph of the gate where the apron is already in place and then that's where the easement would come, the access would be and then the easement would go to the north. And here's that FEMA showing, that FEMA map showing that the FEMA's flood zone for the walkers, what is that, east or west over there? It's not touching the property, so the property is outside of. So there will be, there is some topography there that will be addressed, but I welcome any questions you may have or Rick, would you like to say? Any questions?
Connie, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Sean?
I'm.
John? Michael? Okay. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Do you have anything else to say, Louis?
I, I did have a, kind of a, a wrap-up of, of the presentation, simply with.
Sure.
The findings and staff's recommendation, but for a project like this, I think it's pretty obvious what, what's a project. It's just a fairly simple. Staff was able to make the findings for tentative parcel map in the affirmative and as a result, does recommend, recommend approval. Regarding the access that Kate was just speaking of, I did highlight that access just for ease of, of comprehension for, for what she was speaking of. Available for any questions?
I did have one question on the north lot. Would, looking at the topography there, where, where is the building site going to be on that particular lot? Do you know?
I don't. You know, at, at this stage, we are just contemplating division of land.
Okay. I was just curious.
But I would imagine, looking at the topography, that you'd be looking at the east side if I had to guess.
Okay.
Otherwise, it would be substantial grading.
Yeah.
Although again, it's, it's not actually part of what we're discussing today.
Okay, are there any other questions for Louis? And no public comment? Is there any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're ready for motion.
Based on aforementioned findings one through three, I move that the Lyon County Planning Commission approve the subject, subject to the following conditions, one through seventeen of the approval.
All second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item eight C for possible action to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for the request for a conditional use permit requested by Lineco to construct a battery pre-recycling waste and salvage facility in Mound House at the current end of Industrial Parkway, APNs zero-one-six-six dash one-one-one dash zero-six and zero-one-six dash one-one-one dash oh-seven. The site will provide for temporary storage of batteries on palletized bundles prior to shipping to a recycling facility, PLZ dash twenty-twenty-two dash one-six-six.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting. Again, as read into the record description, the, the subject parcel is located in the north side of Mound House at the terminus of Industrial Parkway. This image is taken from the applicant's middle, showing Highway fifty on the lower part of the slide. It, it is pulled out because the site's a couple of miles north of Highway fifty. It's in the yellow circle there. Zooming in on the two parcels, they do have odd configurations. They're noted there on the left side and then on the right side, we do have imagery displaying the fact that this site has been used for a number, number of mining and aggregate uses in the past. We'll get into more details here moving forward. From the county assessor's page, we see the two parcels at one-hundred-and-ninety, fifty-one plus acres for a total of two-hundred-and-forty-one acres. There is no special flood hazard area for the FEMA flood insurance rate map, so. Potential development in the future would not require a flood plain development permanent. Access to the site, again, would be via industrial parkway highlighted here in red, showing connection to Highway fifty via Highway three forty-one. Notably, industrial parkways paved with asphalt concrete up until about the last mile before one accesses the site where it converts to a gravel aggregate, essentially passing through some BLM lands and then accessing the site, not many or any other uses. This image, again, from the applicant's middle, shows the crossing of VNT Railway as a tourist ride. The, the railway does cross close to the, to the property entrance at grade. We have a second picture here showing that there is a, a gate and obviously some boulders to prevent unauthorized access to the property. Regarding the actual presentation for the prop, for the project, we do have a number of applicant representatives, but I did want to kind of just run through existing development as identified in the staff report first, that the gate there is on the, on the south side in red. There is an existing maintenance building pointed out in orange and then sort of a derelict water tank in blue. Additionally, there are, there is a recognition that there are unauthorized RV camping, camping is in parentheses for a reason. The plan is to eliminate these uses from the site through project implementation. Previous uses, as, as mentioned earlier, did include aggregated, aggregate extraction, crushing, and processing asphalt, hot plant operations. The property was previously known as the Hayward Property and Quarry in Lyon County. I did spend some time using the site as a landfill and a dump. The master plan designation for the twenty-twenty master plan update is resource and the zoning is RR five from Title X for the consistency matrix. The site is subject to rural residential twenty-acre minimum zoning standards and development standards. And per Title Fifteen, industrial uses do include waste and salvage operations. That's in chapter twelve-hundred of, of Title Fifteen where we define a number of those types of industrial uses and these uses do require a conditional use permit per Title Fifteen. The project is classified as a waste and salvage facility for the temporary storage of batteries and palletized bundles prior to shipping to a recycling facility. At this point, we will turn over the. Facility. At this point, we will turn over the presentation to the applicant's representatives for a description of the process.
And I just would like to add, similar to the last presentation, Louis will be giving a presentation afterwards as well.
Okay.
Hello, good morning. My name is Corrado de Gasperas. I am the CEO of Lineco. Lineco's name is derived to stand for lithium nickel cobalt. So that's how we came up with the name of the company. I also am the CEO Comstock Inc. So we own about ten square miles of property on the Comstock where we have mined, you know, in the past. And coincidentally, or not coincidentally, we've had our eyes on this quarry for many, many years. In the context of potential extension to some of the mining property. About two years ago, we changed our strategy to be a renewable energy company. We are now looking to renew battery metals, as you'll hear in just a minute. Also renewing wood for carbon neutral fuels. So the mission of the company is to decarbonize. And we still own our mining properties. You know, on Comstock and when we saw this property and when the owner, Dan Capes, who was the primary owner of the existing Hayward quarry. Was, was open to selling it. We jumped on the chance to do that. And then we saw the opportunity to expand the uses both for this purposes and some more that I'll talk about in this presentation. So I'll just quickly go through. So I want to talk a little bit about very quickly, very briefly, what's happening in this whole battery metal realm. And especially how it pertains to Northern Nevada. Oh, by the way, I'm proud of the Gasperas Gold Hills, Nevada, for the record. Because there seems to be a just a tremendous inflow happening here in Northern Nevada, which I think Lineco is just a small part of. Why we have temporary storage. As Louis indicated in our business plan, a little bit more a color on the location. But then very importantly, you know, our operating and environmental procedures as well as our traffic analysis. Of the property and then some potential expansions that we'd just like to highlight. That's part of our thinking. Just first and quickly, there is an explosion in electronic vehicles. I think everyone's very familiar with it. It's, it is kind of staggering though. When, when you see that by twenty thirty, it's supposed to be an eighteen times increase. That means that the amount of nickel that's going to be required is going to be up sixty percent, cobalt two hundred percent, lithium five hundred percent. Those numbers are staggering, but when you put it in mining context, it means that we would need fifty years of mining just to meet the nickel requirements. Five hundred years of mining to meet the lithium requirement. So the scarcity is insane. And California says now every new vehicle has to be electric by twenty thirty-five to be purchased new. Like our heads, just like we get destabilized, like we don't understand what they're thinking. But the scarcity of metal. So recycling, everyone is saying that recycling is, is critical to the solution, but Northern Nevada somehow. And I don't think it's coincidence Tesla had a big thing to do with it is, is establishing itself as a leader in the recycling of these minerals. I think Nevada is already the leader in terms of lithium mining. We're, we're not doing that. We're recycling, just recycling the metals. And then the US government has come up with a national agenda that is overwhelming. Where they're naming these critical minerals to the US national supply chains, lithium, cobalt, et cetera. Ninety-nine percent of the battery supply chain right now is in Asia. Controlled primarily by China, Japan, Korea, ninety-nine point something percent. There is a huge initiative by the Biden administration and even the prior administration, there's a Trump administration, I think, that named the critical minerals initiative follow. That, that we establish our own supply chains here in North America for strategic reasons and economic reasons. Because of that, there's tremendous amount of money that the government is putting forth for these minerals. And our Nevada delegation, Washington, both sides have been incredibly productive in helping to direct those monies to Northern Nevada. But. There's even more happening. You and I are just applied for a grant to be the central coordinator of the Western supply chain. For, for the lithium supply chain. So it's very exciting, like what's happening, how we somehow have found ourselves as, as the, the, the base of it. When we look at recycling. We think about, there's nine mega tropolises, if you want to think of it that way, where, where most of. Used materials, waste seems to aggregate. Obviously, you know, the, the northeast is a monster one. But right here in Reno, we sit on the basis of one of the ten areas. Vegas is actually in its own area southwest. But, but Reno sits in this very central hub of one of these ten megatropolises, meaning this is where the concentration of these materials tend to go. Now, today, this is stunning. Almost ninety-nine percent of all these battery metals are being land built and dumped. So just gone, right? We critically need them. There's no way we have enough. They're being dumped. The reason that Northern Nevada, excuse me, and Reno is, is already an established distribution center. Is because we're one truck day away from eleven different states. So the location is just absolutely superb. We invested, we were a little opportunistic. We, we invested in Lineco. When the former Aqua Metals facility in Tri Center came up for sale. I guess they were, they built it to recycle lead. Somehow their process wasn't working the way they wanted to. Building came up for sale. We jumped on it. And this is where we plan to do most of our downstream processing of these minerals. We've already perfected the ability to take these materials, crush them, process them and come up with an incredibly pure black mass. So, so basically this is what, what's left over when we process these batteries. We get a black mass that is super rich in lithium, nickel, cobalt, manganese. And graphite. And so our processes ultimately will, will take all those minerals out and then all the scrap metals are also recycled. So we have almost a zero waste. Close circle process. But we need a temporary storage. Why do we need a temporary storage? It's because the current RECA rules, the EPA national environmental rules as interpreted by NDA and applied, does not allow. The batteries to be, have any extended storage at the destination facility, acting processing center, if you will. Which, which means, and this is not unique to Lineco, this is true for American Battery Metals in Fernley, this is true for Redwood right up the street, you know, across the line in Story County. We have to have a separate location for storage versus processing. It's kind of a pain in the butt. It's an interpretation of currently RECA laws. Every state and national delegate that we talked to says the policy stinks. It's inefficient. We're going to try to fix that and end up has already moved. To start allowing, you know, adjacent sites, for example, to be allowed as a, as a proper way to get around very strict regulation. Safely, of course, right? So, but for us, what it means is that we need to have a separate site. And this created some thinking to us and some opportunity to us, which leads us to our application today. But to be very, very clear, we only take universal waste. So in RECA code, there's hazardous waste and there's universal wastes. So universal waste is the only thing we're talking about taking. If, if, for example, a battery is broken or cracked, it would become hazardous. We will not take those batteries. So we are only, our procedure is set only to take universal waste. And for most intensive purposes, they're all discharge spent batteries. This is the site which was properly took you through. I will only highlight on this map that from here. You know, for about ten square miles, we are the primary landholder. So about fifty percent of our property is in story, fifty percent is line. I think we're one of the larger landholders in Lyon County. That's a picture of the quarry site. It's, it's really only been used. For these types of industrial activities. Louis went through them very well. You know, county used it as a dump site for one point. You know, the, the most recent use was, was a gravel quarry with crushing and separating of materials. Prior uses were, you know, there is an old leach pad there too. It's an old mining property. In fact, we were exploring with the National Conservancy, there's a lot of money to convert brownfield old mining properties into new productive industrial uses. So we think there's even more opportunity for that. We were doing that differently, but it would apply here too. And yeah, when there's no use, when there's not a productive use, the blight sort of comes in. This, this is actually a very complimentary picture after a lot of cleanup that was occurring. And it was very bad. I mean, it was very, very unsafe. There was a lot of drug paraphernalia, et cetera. Our guys have now finished cleaning this up. Even though we don't have permission to go forward, we worked with Dan Capes, the owner. Not only to allow us to have access and clean it up, but we worked with him very proactively. Make sure that those boulders got put in front of the gate so that we could restrict access to the site in the future. It, it's a perfect oasis for people to sneak away and hide and do bad things, you know? And we have a lot of experience with that and the rest of our mining properties, unfortunately. So. So this is, this is our proposal for the storage of the batteries. And, and, and one of the things that we've done tremendous amount on, Chris Peterson, who's our general manager sitting here to my left. Of, of all of the Lineco company and project and then Ken Dore, who's been our outside engineer and consultant. This is the layout. We've spent a lot of time with Central Lion Fire. This layout looks a little different than, than the original application because we agreed that we would leave an entire space just for staging. Operation logistics and coordination. That's going to be useful to us, you know, in terms of, you know, ingress, egress. But it, but it'll also be very useful, you know, to the extent that any, any fire, any kind of service activity needs to come in. We've also designed this solely and certainly for access. Each one of these pallets, you know, would contain pallets of batteries. And we wanted to make sure that in every case that there was absolute direct, indirect and, and, and access to each and every one of these. We've gone through this with Central Lion Fire. We've actually proposed to increase the space between, even though what you're seeing here is fully compliant. We're looking to actually increase it even greater for, for more efficient access. So this, this is what the site looks like now. I mean, we've cleaned up all that blight. I'll tell you that there was even a big fire before we cleaned out the block. It was very bad. It was. It was handled by the county, but there was a big fire there. There's really nothing there now to speak of that would be conducive of it. And as I mentioned, you know, we've already taken great strides to seal it off. I'll tell you, even, even with that gate and even with boulders. We still had people creeping back in, but we're just being very proactive to, to make sure that they know it's just not safe. More than anything. Operationally, this will be a twenty-four by seven facility. We will staff it and depending on the scope of the expansion. It'll have at least five and up to fifteen jobs just for the storage. Now. We will also have twenty-four by seven staffing and monitoring. And one of the things that we'll be monitoring is if there's any increases in heat of any of the individual barrels. Or any of the individual pallets. And heat monitoring is the best way to ensure that there wouldn't be any fires or any accidents. But the site has abundant water, abundant infrastructure, and it's very, very well contained, you know, within the area regardless. There are environmental procedures that will have to do with wastewater inspection, dust abatement, logistics in these areas. And you'll see in the conditions, there's an extensive number of conditions in the permit, all of which we are fine with. That we would fully comply to. I think. With a new company coming in and with a different sort of background, those conditions might be intimidating. These conditions are very comparable with everything that we've lived with over the last twelve years, you know, at the mine site and the work. You know, so we're expert in, in wastewater management, is a lot of pollution control, air control, et cetera. You know, and, and, and not to, not to go too far. But we received the top environmental reclamation awards in the state of Nevada, two out of the last three years that we were mining. And that, that's something that we're very proud of because the award winners, we were the only junior miner that won the award. Goldcorp Newmark Comstock, you know, so we're very proud of that. We also won the top awards for safety. You know, so we'd like to come to you with a level of confidence that we're responsible. This is our home. This is part of our platform. The traffic analysis that was done was extensive. And in the initial layout, we were talking about three phases of potential expansion. We've reduced that down now in our mindset. You'll see why in a minute. Well, part of it was because of that staging area. But this had to do with the fullest, largest possibility of expansion, the fullest, largest possibility of storage. And the maximum amount of trucks coming in and coming out under the assumption. That every battery that came to us would first go to the storage facility, be stored, then be taken back and brought to the operating facility. That assumption is false. We, we, it wasn't a mistake. It was just that when you do traffic analysis, you have to do worst case scenario. But our business plan is that we would prefer never to store any batteries here, quite frankly. It sounds a little silly to say that out loud. We would prefer the facility and the storage to be in the same place. The, the biggest issue in this industry is moving batteries. So we don't want to touch them twice or move them twice. Certainly not fifty miles down the road, okay? But this analysis assumes that. So based on this analysis. You know, we would start out at like twenty trucks per day. It would increase to forty trucks per day and then ultimately it would conclude at a hundred and twenty trucks per day. Plus forty trips per day of just our employees working three shifts, you know, from four. So those forty trips are really just normal, you know, five, top five, ten people coming in, out of work. You know, every day for a hundred and sixty. When you look at the hundred and sixty in the context of the site. In the context of the average daily traffic and in the context of an end up review. In the worst, worst, worst case scenario, we would be about eleven percent increase in traffic. Now, I, I gotta emphasize, everybody's good with that number. Everyone seemed to get with that. And in the county seems to find that number. The, the top number is more closer, two to four percent to what the reality is going to be. And I, we ran those numbers to say, look. At the beginning, this is our real business plan. We're looking at two trucks a day at a half a load. Our, our current system can only do five tons a day. So we wouldn't, even if we were going maximum, right? We wouldn't be using more. Most likely, they're just going right to the facility and being crushed. So NDA's rule is if a battery arrives at the final destination, it must be crushed and processed in the same day. That's what our permit says. We just got our permit two weeks ago. So I said, well, how, how exactly do we monitor and measure that? They said, well, Prado, if we're here on Wednesday and a battery shows up and then we come back on Thursday and it's still there, you're in trouble. I said, okay, we got it. So we have to have a buffer, right? That's what this facility. This facility by law cannot have a battery there for more than temporary, which is only up to one year. So we, we laid out our realistic business plans and so we went from two trucks a day at a half load. And, and just as an aside, the last assumption, the last assumption I failed to mention assumes that we're using ten ton trucks, small trucks. With a two time safety factor on number of trips. This assumption is using, you know, eighteen to twenty ton trucks. Which are normal street legal trucks with no safety factor, just to say what we think is really going to happen. Two trucks a day to start half a load, then ten trucks a day, then ultimately thirty trucks a day. I can't imagine you'd ever get to thirty trucks a day. When you add the normal employees, it gets to sixty all in. So that's closer to two to three percent, you know, of traffic increase. So we don't think it's a big deal. What's very exciting for us, and, and this came about, you know, both in, in, in our talking to. The regulators about this issue of separation and what they're willing to do in the future, et cetera, et cetera. And some of the feedback that we got from Mound House. You know, and I'll tell you, one of the great, we had, we had three meetings in Mound House, the last two of which. You know, I participated in, but, but one of the things that really struck me is, and, and we already planned this, but we hadn't talked about it. Was one of the commissioners, the advisory board said, so let me get this straight, you know, you're going to store the batteries here. You're going to lodge the batteries here, but all the good jobs are going to Story County, you know? And I said, not exactly. So the, the facility in Story County is, is, is really geared for what, what Aqua Metals was using it for is the furthest downstream refining. You know, the, the final electrolytic process for downstreaming, the crushing and separating. The crushing and separating, which is what we've been talking about here, uh, would be perfectly situated for this. You know, it's what it's passing for. So our current plan and this current permit, not to confuse anything, is for storage. But once we get the storage situated up and running, once we get our pilots up and running, we would love nothing more than to expand this facility. For actual crushing and separating, which is much more productive use. That's the little picture you see there in the bound back corner. And that's this design that we've come up with now, you know, for the site. So, um, you know, this, this is, um, I had to push this site a little closer to the storage. Because I needed to fit it on one slide, but we have two hundred and fifty acres, you know, in the back there that would beautifully accommodate. Having these two things and then it would really be full line town business. Again, we're not asking for any production approval or anything here, just the storage. So, um, that's really, um, the prepared remarks. Um, and if you have any questions, you can have to take them.
The railroad runs through one of your property. Uh, you're supposed to put berms up there. Keep the view nice, I, I guess, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Around, around the four, you mean? Around our story. Around this property?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's already a, a very strong, like, mountainous buffer around.
I, I'm confused here. You get your, uh, fire protection on one side of the track. And you got the berms on the track. And then you get your receiving on the other side. How does the fire people get to the? Storage area and plus you only have five people per shift. Is that adequate or how's that going to be handled?
Yeah, so on the, on the second point first, because I can answer that all, all by myself. So said five to fifteen, um, I think five is, is because the initial startup is going to be. Uh, with almost no storage, right? Just getting infrastructure and the monitoring all in place. Um, it could be up to fifteen people. They would be working twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. You know, there isn't a lot of, um, manual labor associated with the people. It's just monitoring. Right? So making sure that the site is safe, making sure that, um, they're monitoring the existing, uh, storage of the activities. So, um, that number could be higher, uh, although I don't know, that would be much higher for just monitoring. You want, do you want to help on the Berm question? And I was just going back to the picture of the site there, that works.
If I can figure out how to use that, um, Ken Dore, for the record, uh, I'm doing a little bit of civil engineering assistance for Linniko on the project. And I also know a little bit about the railroad because I, for the last. Almost thirty years now, I've been the engineer for the B and T route reconstruction. So one of my biggest concerns was. How's this going to, project going to possibly impact the B and T tourist train operation? Um. Basically, I don't think it's going to impact it at all, but one of the things that I told Corrado and Chris right off the bat is that. What we're going to want to do is put, uh, visual screening, uh, between the railroad track right away and the post-site. So yes, that they, they agreed to do that right off the bat. They've got an excessive, uh, boulders, if you will. So the idea is we're going to, as part of the Bell McPlan, we'll submit a plan and, uh, and. Try to separate as much as we can from, uh, visual operations from people on the train. Um, uh, that crossing, if you will, but the other question is. The main access road does cross railroad tracks. And it crosses a heavy-duty industrial crossing, which was constructed in two thousand nine. And at the time that was to support the, uh, aggregate extraction and hot plant operations going on. Um, so it's gonna, uh, obviously be adequate for the volume and the weight of the trucks that are coming across there at this point. Um, so they're very concerned about making sure that there's no issue with, I, I can't see there's going to be one. Uh, should there be a problem, they know that besides emergency services, they need to get a hold of the railroad to, uh, suspend operations on trains. Chances are that's not ever going to happen. Uh, any other engineering questions? You know, I'll give it back to generals.
So did I answer your question, Tom?
Yes, thank you.
John?
John?
Um, so. My concern is with the, uh, proposed abandonment of, um, existing well eight and nine. Um, which could be. Potentially used, potentially used. And a lot of us are aware of issues with water in the past in Mount House and. Uh, you know, I'm just concerned with, with, uh, the loss of those wells that could potentially use them. And, and the source of contamination if they were maintained in the usual state, but. Uh, I, I don't know if you have a, uh, the code, the end-up code regarding the. Uh, the storage of the batteries, uh, not at the same site. I mean, the origination of the, of the batteries in, in the Sierra Nevada district, it's supposed to be California, you know? Um, what's the size of the tri-center location that you're recycling?
So our facility, our facility is a hundred and thirty-six thousand square feet. You know, it sits, um, someone says right across the street from Tesla's digging factory. It's actually a few miles. You can see, it's right on, on the other side of USA Charles Way. Um, but if you're, if you're asking about the regulation, it, it's a head scratcher. You know, let, let me explain it a little better because I, I'm sure you're going to hear about it more involved, see things are happening, but. So basically, you know, you, you can, if you, if you, you, if you were going to get a recra permit. Right? If you're going to get a recra permit, like these national recycling centers doing, you know, it's, it's a, it's a very, very extended process. Um, and, um, the, what every state in the union seems to be doing, certainly Nevada. Is, um, issuing what they call a written determination, which allows them to, uh, to allow you to fully comply with recra. But there's one big caveat. We don't want batteries stored on the site, right? If you store batteries on the site. Um, you know, then it's, it's a whole different process. So then, you know, when I first heard this, I said, well, what do you do? Well, store it on a different site. But so we know it's nonsensical and, and even the head of, um, the end-up bureau, who's great, Darren Looman. I mean, they say, you know, we're working very hard, right? With the other states, we're working very hard. With the federal government to see if we can modify this and change. We expect it's going to change in the future, right? But, but, you know, basically what they're saying today is if you own parcel here and you own a parcel here. You can process here, but not store here, but you can store here.
Yeah, and you, from a logistics standpoint, it just doesn't make.
It kills.
I eat in court.
It's a very undermining thing.
You know, fifteen miles out of the way.
Yeah.
And then moving them back, it just doesn't.
It, it hurts our competitiveness as a state.
Yeah.
You know, and I'll tell you, interestingly, when you filed our written determination, a national Washington DC firm. One minute before a public comment, you know, um, um, was, was closed. Filed like a twenty-page letter and they weren't attacking Linniko and they weren't attacking our business. They were attacking the written determination. You know, because they see Nevada, um, gaining ground, like Redwood's here, Tesla's here, American Valley Metals is here, Linniko's now here. Right? And these, these, these big national recycling centers maybe see they're losing some ground. So they tried to cut it off. But, um, we cleared it and we got our permit, so we're happy.
I, I just.
It's a head scratch.
If you have that regulation or somewhere I can look.
Oh, yeah, I'm happy to send it to you.
And, and I, I like to look at. What is the, you said you have a hundred thirty-six thousand square foot recycling facility in the tri-center?
Yeah.
And, and, um, do they give you a guideline as far as the separation from the storage facility and the recycling facility?
So they, the initial, so it's evolving, honestly, like it's evolved. When I first spoke to them. And I, and they, they educated me on this. I was like, so could I just parcel my backyard and store it over there? They're like, no. And I said, well, there's a battery warehouse next door. Could I use them? They're like, well, it's a different owner. Yes. So then, okay, it's weird. Now they're saying, you know, as long as it's two legally separate parcels, you know, we're open. But, but it's not, it's evolving. I don't, I don't want to represent for them. Like they, they're trying hard to make it as easy as possible. American Battery Metals and Firmly, who just got approved for the same thing, type of thing we're talking about. Um, they're doing it like right next to each other, you know? Redwood, I don't know, because they're very secretive. They're, they're building a mega facility, eight minutes up the road here, and I think they're doing the storage right across the street. They just said they're going to buy another seventy-five acres across the street, so.
There's not necessarily a size requirement as far as the storage facility version.
No, you can't store, you can't have one back. If you have one battery there the next day, it's, they're in trouble. So now look, what I, what I would have done before, if I had the ability, is bought like. Twenty acres right next door, but there is no acres right next door in Tri-Sun. And they're very, very, very expensive. So then we said, let's suffer a big separation, okay? Uh, but then we said, hmm, when we really see how big our production could be. Why don't we do crushing and separating here? Because then transporting black mass, there's only twenty, twenty-five percent of the weight. Right? And, um, and very compactable. You know, so like, you know, transporting batteries is kind of a pain because they're all different sizes and shapes. Transporting black mass is like super sacking. And it's very safe. So we see this business model evolving. I think one county is going to be the beneficiary. Right? You know, because of some of the rigidity of these rules. But it's evolved. You're going to hear more, I'm sure you're going to hear more about it because everyone wants to come here. And to me, the idea that we're already in mining state, but the idea that we could be the leader in these critical metals. You know, the ones that we have, like lithium, gold and silver, the ones that we don't have, like cobalt, nickel. You know, many, they're all going to start coming here. And if California booms with these EVs. Nevada is going to be the big beneficiary of these recyclings, you know? So, um, I'm excited. I couldn't be more excited, you know, about what's happening.
You said there's a one-year maximum storage time on those batteries. Uh, so that's them depth. Do they monitor that?
Yeah, so, so to be clear, under the written determination. Um, it's only universal waste, not hazardous, right? And we can only hold it for up to a year. They, they require that in our permit. It's also a federal regulation and we monitor it with our procedures. But I, I'll tell you, um, we're talking max here. Five, six, seven thousand tons. I mean, it might be one or two, right? What I'm excited about now is getting the storage, getting the operation in place and then expanding it for production. And that's, that's not what we're here to talk about, but that's really what we're looking for, especially for such a non-use property.
Thank you.
Did you have a question, Audrey? No, uh, this conversation answered my question because I really kind of wanted to get a sense about what M D P's stance. And, and if you had a sense of, of how long that process might be. I know they're working toward it.
Yeah.
But we're talking, we're talking bureaucracy here.
I know, I know. So, so, um, three things. One, for John, I will send you the N R S or the regulation. But it's, um, it's also an interpretation that N D F's making of recra. So you might want, we might have a little call with the regulators together. They could explain it to you as well, but we'll see.
Yeah, we're just going to say, when you send information, probably should send it to staff and then they can, yeah, they can process it.
Yeah, we'll highlight where they're interpreting and why they're thinking. It's a big, it's a big buzz right now with like our state senators and our state reps, I mean, our federal senators or federal representatives. Because they're so bullish on the supply chain and the critical movement of supply chain. Um, I'll say to you also too, that there's been thirteen. Battery manufacturing facilities announced to be built in the United States already alone. Right? Panasonic just announced a big one in Kansas City, like, obviously they're up right up the road here. So, so this is coming in a big, big way. Um, and I just think it's great now. Um, what was your second question? I forgot.
Hmm, oh, it was about sending the information that John was requesting.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That was, that was it.
Yeah, but I will say that N D F's not been, um. Obscinate. They haven't been fighting it. They're trying to figure out a way, right, to do it while still complying with the law. Our, our history at Comstop is a hundred percent compliance. And, um, doing whatever it takes for the community, you know? So, um, you know, we know there's something new that's coming here. It's not, it's not new yet. It's northern Nevada. It's Story County has been dealing with it, um, a lot. Um, Line County and Story County are collaborating. We feel very, very well since they won a plenty fire. Um, in, in the last, um, two Mount House meetings, we had very productive discussions about fire safety. And, um, we decided to, uh, defer this meeting. We were on the agenda for last month. Because of some of the points that were raised, I could tell you, we're very glad we did, because we met with Central Line County Fire. We talked about a couple of dozen, um, uh, procedures to approach it. When I first went to the Mount House meeting, they said, well, what happens if A happens? And then happens if B happens? And what happens if C happens? And our response was Central Line County Fire, the condition in the permit is we must comply with everything the Central Line County Fire said, we must. And they said, that's good, but what is it? You know? And so we spent a lot of time with them. So we have, we have a great view of what they think is important. Um, and, um, that's what we'll do.
I, I have a question. If things, you know, it seems like things are evolving. If it does evolve and you no longer have to store the batteries offsite, what will you do with this project?
So ultimately, if, um, if we didn't, well, so I think we've already answered that question. Thank you. So our, our notion is that having a long distance between storage and processing. Is, is really not tolerable. Like, it's not, it's not really a sustainable model, right? It, 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 it could help us for a little bit of storage. So we've already decided that we ultimately want to expand and put the real front end of the production right here on site. And so what would end up happening is that would literally just be, um, fully intact, fully critically important with all the operating safety measures. That would literally just be where our inventory would sit. But our inventory, I mean, ideally, everyone wants to be just in time, right? But there's always going to be some amount of inventory buffer there. So we would use it for the same purpose, but probably in a diminished way.
Okay.
And that would be important to the ultimate.
Right. Thank you. Rhonda, do you have any questions?
No.
Sean?
Yeah, so my question is, this really, it's kind of off of John's question is.
Sure.
So if the batteries are maintained there for the shorter duration and this conditional use permit is for storage. You have a breakage on the site and now this battery becomes hazardous. What's the process or timeframe to get in and off the property to that production site?
So we have four procedures for that. So first and foremost, we inspect them as they're coming in, right? And so two very important things. We will not accept any battery if it's manifested as hazardous. Which, which is a little annoying from a business perspective, because if they're truly universal, there's no breakages, right? But they're manifested as hazardous, we're sending them right back. Because there's legal liability issues associated with how it's manifested. So it's very, very strict. Um, you know, the logistics codes versus universal versus hazardous is manifesting. If we, um, if we inspect and there's a broken seal or something that is being. Conveyed as universal, but is really hazardous based on our inspection, we won't allow it on site and we'll either immediately send it back. Right? Or have to, I guess, what would you do? Crush it or no, send it to the waste dump?
We would either dispose of it, be a regular half of displaced, oh, procedure, the designation, so the kind. Or if it was universal, we just didn't want to store it in the center to the.
So with N D F's requirement, what are we looking at timeframe, twenty-four hours off the site?
Off the site, depends on the storage conditions, uh, probably thirty days, um, in containment. Like a full sealed containment where it would end up. Uh, but depending on the retro status of that, of that generator permit. Is where is the cycle which it gets dispatched in this final destination.
But technically it's classified hazardous waste for that time period, right?
Yes.
So if it's hazardous, we're taking it off site within twenty-four hours.
Where's it stored?
As, as often as we want, is, is the actual answer, right? As often as you can get that barrel of determined hazardous contained and sent to its final destination is as, is, is as long as it has to stay.
Right.
So it could be twenty-four hours, it could be thirty days. Uh, in the mining industry, we, we've done thirty days with our hazards. Every thirty-day site.
So, so we, if we identify something as hazardous that's not supposed to be coming, we send it back. If something becomes hazardous, we segregate it, contain it and send it off, right? And so. We can do that as fast as.
And I just asked that question because I wanted to clarify, because condition three is material changes, substantial material changes means that you have to come back for public hearing of some sort, because I, I, I know it's probably not the case, but we usually get complaints of storage facilities and after the fact, you've been in business and in those roles.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, meaning, meaning if somehow we started to store hazardous, yeah, we're not gonna do that, but um, a hundred percent agree, yeah.
And, and just for good reason, you're not permitted within that or the government to store half.
We don't, yeah.
But that defining line is once the batteries are on site. When it's on site and it's damaged, then it becomes hazardous and it has to be corrected.
Okay.
Actually, I'm pretty bad on what's always being asked. Um, if you have a storage areas designated, uh, what, I mean, is there some sort of covering on the ground?
Chris Peterson, Lenico. Um, the ground will be covered with gravel. Um, and graded so that you can see on this map here, there's two green circles. So the, the drainage will be engineered such that it, it moves towards those green circles with gates that can be opened. So if, if effluent water wanted to be captured, we'd open the gates, capture it in the green ponds. And it doesn't leave. If it's regular rainwater, that's not, not a problem. Then it, it just touches the ground, the gates are closed and it runs by and runs off. Um, as far as um, over the, the batteries, we've considered using a shade structure, we've considered using small um, shade structures, we've considered using barrels, various ideas to keep the batteries um, out of the sun and out of the weather.
Does anyone else have any questions for them? So I guess we'll wait for Louis. Louis, are you ready to?
Uh, Louis Carriola, senior planner. Thank you guys for your detailed explanation. I certainly learned the patterns to the nuances of the use. Uh, so the So the rest of my presentation essentially tries to summarize and uh, explain some of staff's rationale uh, for the twenty-two conditions that are added to this condition. I appreciate the questions from the commissioners, uh, particularly in relation to hazardous waste. I hope that, that Corrado and Chris's explanations regarding the operations uh, recognize that hazardous waste is not permitted in this zoning district, uh, cannot is not authorized or even suggested for authorization as a primary use um, via this conditional use permit. Um, that would require a master plan and a zone check. Uh, so we, we, it doesn't sound like it would be. Um, I, I was just speaking with Director Haskin. I think in the concrete land use planning, we might think of it as, you know, someone who has a, 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 a painting business um, could technically generate some hazardous waste. It would be storing some, but it would be incidental to the primary use. So I think that's an important distinction. Okay, uh, so uh, in the presentation here, I tried to summarize uh, the findings in the application and uh, call out some of uh, the more the more important parts of uh, both the applicant's response to the findings as well as uh, staff's commentary. Uh, so uh, we'll, we'll also see some underlining here, uh, so that we don't, I don't end up reading all the text to you. Uh, but finding A is addressing compliance with the master plan. Uh, staff leaves the applicant has appropriately identified land use policies um, from chapter three. Uh, in our master plan, uh, specifically land use policy one four, which suggests that new industrial uses should only be located in areas not adversely impacting existing residential settlements. While there are residential uh, homes along industrial parkway, driving through mound house, of course. Uh, that last mile or so includes nothing. Um, so staff's of the opinion that's, that land use policy is appropriately quoted, as is uh, land use policy three two. Uh, noting that business and industry locations uh, should be consistent with future land use um plans and, and the master plan designation would be called resource, uh, which does contemplate type of use proposed. Finding B addresses compatibility with the character and integrity of the base development. Uh, and uh, requests that potential adverse impacts related to traffic, noise, odors, visual nuisances uh, include mitigation measures. I think Corrado went through uh, in great detail, uh, the traffic analysis submitted. Um, in addition, uh, Ken discussed uh, the Birmingham to provide a visual barrier of the use from the VNT tourist rail line. U- uses such as the, the unauthorized access in RV camping, if we're be generous by calling it camping uh, have been actively mitigated by the applicant. So regardless of future project implementation, that's already a benefit in staff's mind to the community. So staff is able to make this finding affirmative, recognizing that the applicant has made efforts to mitigate potential impacts. Uh, finding C addresses the uh, the, the traffic counts. Again, this topic has been covered fairly well already. Notably, NDOT initially did ask for the traffic impact study. As far as for, for a traffic count, not a full impact study regarding access onto highway fifty uh, with the, with the proposed uh, um, number of trips as outlined throughout the uh, throughout the phasing and even with potential uh, employee, employees, uh, NDOT offered no further comments and had no request for improvements along highway fifty. Oh, and notably, the applicant will be responsible for maintaining uh, industrial parkway that gravel access scenario, including dust control. County not be presuming for uh, in the future, accepting the dedication permits. Uh, finding D, uh, again, addresses potential impacts via traffic uh, and asks for mitigation where appropriate, as described and even already depicted, there is already a security gate uh, in place and then access onto, onto industrial parkway would be maintained. And again, no, uh, no improvement along highway fifty were requested by NDOT. Uh, finding E, uh, again, the CP findings do sort of uh, repeat themselves a little bit. Uh, as far as addressing potential adverse impacts to adjacent properties. Uh, so again, that berm is, is proposed, uh, the berming to protect the VNT rail line, tourist train. Additionally, staff is included again, twenty-two conditions, really emphasize fire suppression systems. Uh, and then requirements for road maintenance as well as the screening uh, from the tourist trains. So staff's able to make that finding also in affirmative. Finding F uh, addresses any additional standards uh, imposed uh, upon the project by reviewing entities as well as those that are applicable to the base zoning district. Uh, again, twenty-two uh, conditions in staff's opinion uh, do address a, a, a number of the potential uh, impacts from the project. Uh, additionally, uh, one of the more pertinent conditions uh, does require an independent review uh, by the fire district. So uh, as Corrado already indicated, I think they've spent a significant time working with the fire district to ensure that, that they're satisfied uh, with the plan moving forward. But this, of course, is still in this preliminary planning stage, uh, so those, those uh, fire suppression systems not yet been approved. Finding G, uh, again, addresses potential uh, material damage to other properties in the vicinity. Uh, were this site to be located one mile south on industrial parkway? Uh, this might actually be an issue, but because we're again, looking at a property that is notably separated geographically from residential settlements, uh, staff is confident that recommended conditions would address uh, potential impacts. I did include all of the twenty-two recommended conditions in the slides here. Um, with some underlines that sort of support uh, much of the, the language we used just, just previously here discussing the findings. Uh, notably, the applicant is, is required to work with fire building uh, as well as other government, state, local agencies uh, that would permit the use. Um, construction documents uh, still need to be submitted through separate reviews. So the building department would be reviewing uh, bathroom facilities uh, which are required to be installed within one year. Person receiving permits for site improvements in the site as well as, in other, in other words, temporary bathrooms couldn't just be stayed in place for the long term. Uh, additionally, uh, security, um, security housing a watchman's quarters uh, would also need to be submitted. Number ten is a, a condition that we uh, included here a, as a result of a description from the applicant regarding um, number of types of plans and documentations that would be prepared for this use. Uh, staff would like to take the opportunity, once they're completed, to review them uh, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or line county business license. Uh, notably, these would include a security plan, a communication plan, training plan and an inspection plan. Uh, the expectation is that many of these documents likely already be required by state entities. Uh, and therefore, in Lion County, wouldn't have to presume that we are experts in this topic. Uh, but we would like to have all that information filed, uh, in case there's any sort of um, substantial change in the future. We have a detailed description of what this CP would authorize. Uh, we already discussed the bathroom facilities being required within one year, so that's so that we wouldn't have just porta potties out there. Uh, additionally, the, the, the security personnel will, will need a structure. Um, notably, there, there is a plan, as Corrado indicated, for twenty-four hour uh, security monitoring site. I, condition fifteen, again, uh, really kind of hammers home the point that the fire department needs to play a central role uh, in, in Lion County's sign off on this project. Uh, maintenance of industrial parkway again would be the obligation of applicant, including dust control. Condition eighteen outlines some of the language we, we received, uh, community development from uh, utilities director, Keta. Uh, in regard to the wellhead protection plan and the recognition that wells eight and nine uh, would be within what's called a twenty-year travel time. Uh, essentially, RCI Engineering Company hired to do a, a ground monitoring study to determine uh, the migration of potential uh, pollutants already in the ground. Uh, that would in twenty years potentially uh, reach these inactive wells that it will, within the Lion County Wellhead Protection Plan. Uh, these wells are scheduled to be abandoned uh, by the, at the applicant's expense. Um, the language in the staff report is directly from uh, Director Keta. So, um, you know, Lion County's comfortable that uh, the aquifer no longer being used. These wells no longer being part of a public uh, water system. And the formal decommissioning abandonment as well is a secure way to ensure we don't introduce problems to a public water system. Condition nineteen discusses those, those burns and visual impacts uh, to the VNT rail line. Uh, we do, of course, have drainage guidelines adopted in twenty eighteen, uh, the design for uh, potential runoff associated with fire suppression system, for instance. I think it actually, not just for instance, probably most notably, uh, would need to incorporate the required design from the drainage guidelines. Uh, as such, staff is able to recommend approval of the conditional use permit. And I am, of course, uh, available for questions.
Does anyone have any additional questions for Louis? John?
Uh, yeah, I've got a slide up a while ago that showed the retention ponds for the drainage. Are those retention ponds lined or are they just?
Uh, they would be lined. They are lines would be lined with a grain. And then other only, those are conditional potential ponds. So we'll only retain drainage that we thought we didn't want.
I have a question. Once it's in there, how do you get rid of it? And then take it off site.
Tanks need to be shipped off to the appropriate destination facility or is taken to our tri center facility for operation.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, um, now's time for a public comment. If anyone wants to speak, please write your name on the lectern and state your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Adam. Sure. Uh, my name's Phil Cooley. I represent VNT Management. We own the property uh, to the south going up industrial parkway where the closest private property owner to uh, the facility. So a few things that draw some concern, um, obviously is the road improvements. Um, I see where they're talking about, uh, you know, basically keeping the dust down. Um, that road becomes very washboardy. It's not a very good, I mean, what you would consider a gravel road. It's not it's not any kind of standard road that you would want truck full of batteries bouncing up and down. So we'd obviously like to see something done a little bit more substantial to the road. Uh, the water infrastructure that they have on site, so I did talk to the fire department this morning. Uh, the water infrastructure is a little bit lacking on site. They would like to see some kind of a tie to the municipal system. So I think that should be some type of consideration for a condition. Um, also possibly a reclamation bond. I mean, I know that they're very well intentioned in recycling these batteries, but what happens for liability of the county if and when their process doesn't work and all of a sudden, you know, they abandon this site with ten acres full of batteries on top of it. So I, just like any other mining operation, I think that a reclamation bond would be appropriate. And then, uh, so just so everybody's aware, I mean, obviously, my biggest concern is fire um, when it comes from these facilities. The closest uh, full-time fire station that is uh, located within this from this facility is the station down on Fortune Drive. So that's quite a, quite a ways to get fire uh, personnel to the site. But you know, I don't know how that can be addressed, but obviously, I mean, there's not full-time staff in mound house. That's all volunteer staff. So it would take somebody quite a while if there was fire that broke out. And I think kind of to get to John's point too, why, why this location? Um, I know Corrado said there's no property for sale in the T R I center. I just pulled up a quick little loop net uh, search on my phone. There's quite a few industrial property sites within the tri center that would be, seemed like a lot closer to this facility and they wouldn't have that trucking uh, going back and forth fifty miles. I mean, one item to note, I mean, the reason that Lenico is over in the Aqua Metals building is because the Aqua Metals building caught on fire. Um, so I mean, fire is definitely a real big hazard um, with these facilities. So I think that's about all I have, but I would definitely like to see something, you know, some kind of condition put in there for the road improvements and then the water infrastructure to be tied to the municipal system. Just to make sure that they have adequate fire flows for any kind of accident that would happen at the site. Accident that would happen at the site.
Is there any other public comment?
My name's Danny Coos for the record. We live just down the road from where they're proposing to put this site in. And one of the concerns that they're. Talking about lining these ponds, but the water's going to run. Down the gravel until it gets into these lined ponds. Well, that's going to contaminate the. The groundwater, which we have a spring just up. From there that comes to our house and we use for our livestock and irrigation and whatnot. So. I don't know how that you were control that. To get to these ponds while it's going through a gravel. Gravel there. So. That looks like it would have to be all contained from these batteries all the way to the contained the pond. So.
Can can write your name for us, please? Is is there any other public comment? Carrato, I'd like to ask a question because one of the things was brought up was a reclamation bond. Is there anything like that in place? Because that was kind of a concern of mine too.
Yeah. So I do not believe that we would have requirements for any reclamation bond, but. I would be more than willing to have a reclamation bond. We have over seven and a half million dollars of reclamation bond in place at the mine. It'd be very easy for us to extend it.
Can we include that, Louis? Thank you.
I I try another comment.
Yes.
You know, the Aqua Metals building, they did have a fire, but it was in it was in the lead refinery. Right? So they weren't. They weren't doing any point with these kind of batteries. And they had a state of the art. Water suppression system. I've never seen something so amazing. Then there was some welding over Thanksgiving. They left the welder on presumably, they said, and the fire suppression didn't turn on. I mean, literally, it's supposed to go like this and they installed it to go like that and it never turned off. Which was tragic. But that they've been helpful to store.
Okay. Thank you.
And and just one other thing, on on the water, there is a tank there. This was brought up in the mound house. Productive, like do we have sufficiency of water? So our plan with the long fires to install two more tanks and have a certainty of. Sufficiency of water. So that Centralline County Fire is going to require that, I think, regardless.
Okay, Sean, did you have a question?
And one more question. One of the comments had to deal with the road and is really for most or Andrew maybe is road department. They make any comments on industrial park?
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Community Development Director. I don't believe that we received any requirements from the building department. Or I mean, the road department for improvements. Other than to maintain the road.
Would that be addressed when we get farther down after the conditional use permit?
As far as.
The stability of the road for this kind of activity? I mean, it's a side object of the conditional use permit. Will it be addressed at some point?
So I know there's a condition in there that they would have to maintain the. Maintain the road, but I don't think there's anything in there that.
Requires upgrades.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I actually have one question. So I know when you guys were talking about how the battery is going to be stored on top of gravel. Is there? Something underneath it or is that just draining straight into the soil or something? For example, does break open hazardous waste? They're all sitting on the ground. They're not covered, only gravel on the ground.
Yeah. So I think you want to go ahead.
Can you state your name each time you come up so that they can tell on the recording who's talking?
Chris Peterson, Lenico. So the the battery pallets themselves will be stored on on gravel on top of dirt. The batteries are not leaking. They're not. They're not perforated. They they were inspected when they came in. They may or may not be stored inside of a barrel after that to further contain anything in, you know, in the battery. And then the batteries are inspected every hour. By a physical person to make sure that if and they're all situated so that each each bundle is inspectable all around. So if anything ever leaked, we would see it immediately and remove it and send it away in the proper manner.
Thank you. Is there any more? Are there any more questions? If not, is there any more public comment?
Good morning. This is Laura Reyes. I'm the CEO of United Mining Corporation and CEO of Clean Speed, a battery technology company. And my question is, is this going to be an enclosed facility? Before batteries start to be stored there?
Yes. Rodney Gasparis for the record is Gold Hill. So the 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 storage facility, as Chris mentioned, will be on pallets. The batteries will be contained in something like a barrel. You know, but it won't. There there is not a plan to have an indoor facility for the batteries. In fact, line Centralline County prefers that wouldn't be the case. If we ultimately expand into production, there'll be obviously a full back getting close to some.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, ready for a motion? Did you have more that you wanted to say, Louis?
Sorry, Lewis Carriola. After speaking with Director Haskin, we would recommend that the reclamation bond. Be for the the idea of one be introduced as a condition simply to be posted at the time of issuance of. A site improvement or upgrading permit for the site.
Thank you.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Community Development Director. Obviously, that would be in addition to any reclamation bond that they'd have to post as a part of the site improvement.
Okay. So any motion would need to include that?
There's some comments about the road going down. What's the weight of these trucks coming in there? These huge semis? What's the tonnage and it grows?
Plan the plan, the the traffic started to use ten ton trucks. And we were talking about using up to twenty ton. So when we when we were using the road for some mining back in twenty thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, we were using eighteen. You know, eighteen trunk side side dump. So.
Okay, last chance for public comment, last chance for questions. Okay, if not, we're ready for a motion.
I'll do it. I'll take a stab at it. Based on the aforementioned findings, A through G, I moved at the line county. Planning Commission. Is this to request? That the Board of County Commissioners approve? Or do we approve this?
We request approval.
Request approval. Okay, so I did it right. For a conditional use permit to construct a battery pre recycling waste and salvage facility in mound house at the current end of industrial parkway. APN zero one six, one eleven, zero six, and zero one six, one eleven, zero seven, subject to the. Twenty three. Conditions of approval.
And additional one. Well, that one that was included. There were twenty two, and so I put the twenty third on there.
P L Z twenty twenty two, one six six.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? John and Loretta? Five to two? Everyone was aye except for John and Loretta? Okay. Now recess recess to convene. As the Lion County Public Lands Management Advisory Board. Item nine, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Is there? Any public participation on public lands? Seeing none, item ten is action items. Do we have any action items? Okay, eleven, board member comments. Does anyone have any comments? Well, future agenda items.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Community Development Director. Our next meeting, I will be giving an update on the public lands bill.
Thank you. Item thirteen, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Any public comment on public lands management? Seeing none, we adjourn to reconvene as the Lion County Planning Commission. Item fourteen, staff comments and commissioner comments. Andrew?
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Community Development Director. Just want to give you an update on what happened at the last Board of County Commissioners meeting. We had a number of planning items that were on the agenda. So. The case scale conditional use permit, remember that was for the solar and for the geothermal here in Robuska. That was approved. The Winston Solar Conditional Use Permit also in Robuska was approved. The D and G Investments zoning map was zoning map amendment was approved, as was their tentative parcel map here in Mason Valley. And the agricultural tourism ordinance was proposed at the last meeting as well. So we will be hearing that in October. At the Florida County Commissioners Meeting, I also gave a presentation to the Board of County Commissioners on building moratoriums. Which I will be giving the same presentation here at the October meeting. So just to, so everyone's aware, we were requested to do a presentation on what it would take to do a building moratorium. In Dayton, a short answer is it would be very difficult, but I'm going to give that presentation to the planning commission as well, so that you are all aware.
When will that one be? October? Thank you.
That is it. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, item fifteen, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters. Related to the Lion County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic and will not be restricted based on viewpoint. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included. On an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Last chance for public comment. Seeing none, we are adjourned.